I'd like to call the Lancaster School District, or the Central School District Board of Education Meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I'd like for you to silence yourself, silence your cellphones, and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing afterwards for a moment of silent reflection. Tonight, we remain standing for Mary Ann Gabel, a teacher A from 1993 through 2009, who passed away on December 1st, 2023, and for Catherine McMillan, a bus driver from 1970 through 1996, who passed away on December 18th, 2023. Thank you. I'd also make a note that Mr. Sage and Mr. Davenport are excused this evening. Oh, yeah, and Mr. Talarico. All right, getting right in. 4.0 district data presentation. I think we all want to go and are going to go sit here. Okay.
All right, we're trying something a little bit different in terms of our positioning this evening. So, good evening, everybody, board members. Hope you had a, we hope you've had a fantastic start to the new year. We're excited to review some of the data that we have from this past school year. And I will say, the timing is a little bit later than anticipated, but that's due largely to the release of the statewide data for public consumption. What does that mean? Kind of why is that important? Well, we have always found that data in isolation really doesn't tell the whole story, right? If we say 93% on any given exam, what does that mean? And how does that relate? Is that good? Is that bad? So some of what we'll present today, for example, are going to be the district results in comparison to others. Erie One BOSEs, for example, and their 19 component districts that make up Erie One BOSEs, and New York State as a whole. So what we've tried to do here is contextualize the data within the framework of our CDEP, our Comprehensive District Education Plan. In our worlds, the CDEP is a living and breathing thing to help us as a district really stay focused on the goals and underlying themes that I think everybody is familiar with, but also to make decisions through the use of the data. So just a very quick refresher, what you'll see above the ground level, so to speak, in the red are the goals. And those goals were purposely and strategically placed on the tree and the branches because of their connectedness within each, within the goals, within the framework as a whole. But then below the ground, in the white, where it looks like the roots, those are our underlying themes. Those underlying themes are the things that support the goals and support, more importantly, our students as they strive to attain and achieve those goals, and support our teachers, our staff, and our administrators as they're trying to achieve and attain those goals. Lastly, like I said, everything is connected there, and that was done purposely. Up here, you'll see the actual goals, as I mentioned. Those CDEP goals, we're going to contextualize the data largely with some of those up there, and a couple from outside of the CDEP. At this point in the journey, and really for the purpose of this presentation, some of the goals are more salient than others, and we're going to focus on those today. Those are the ones that we're really going to be digging into a little bit to look at the data as they, as they relate to those various goals. Now, I've used "we" quite a bit already, and "we" is the entire team up here today. So give me a moment to introduce some of our fantastic leaders who are joining us. I'll start with Bethany. I'll turn it over.
Good evening. My name is Bethany Henke. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at William Street School.
And John Tresman, I'm the Assistant Principal at Lancaster Middle School.
Good evening. I'm Kim Ludit, one of the Assistant Principals at Lancaster High School.
I'm Andy Krasman, the Director of Secondary Education. And last, but certainly not least...
Hello, I'm Karen Marchioli. I'm the Director of Elementary Education.
And I probably should have started. Andrew Kufel, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and PPS. So with that, we're going to get right into it, and I'm going to turn it back over to Karen Marchioli to discuss some of our participation rates.
So, as you know, over the past decade, there's been a large discussion around participation in the 3-8 state tests, specifically ELA and math. We're going to look a little bit tonight at what our participation is, how that's changed over the past couple of years, and what a high participation rate means for us as a district. So first, we have 3rd grade, and this is math. Starting back in 2019, pre-COVID, we had about 60% of our students who were taking that assessment. Fast forward past COVID, and to this past year, we hit 95%. That's an exciting mark, because 95% is the number that both the state and the federal government have laid out as a mandate for us to hit in order to be in compliance with those state tests. More importantly, numbers that hover around 95% and higher give us a better look at the data. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more as we go on. But if you think about it, if we were all sitting in this room, and we gave everybody a test, but 40% of the people said, "Yep, I'm not taking that." And then, somebody like me, or any of these administrators here, were charged with making curricular and instructional decisions. But only a randomization of 60% of the people took the test. We don't have a full look of what our students know and what they don't, where we're strong and where we have challenges. And so, having that 95% means that in 3rd grade, when we look at that data, along with the in-house data that we have, our own assessments that we've created, that gives us a better idea of where our strengths are and where we need to do some work. 4th grade, again, was started a little bit lower at 57%, is up to 89%. We would like, we'd absolutely like that to be higher, but that's still a number where, when we're making some decisions, I feel pretty confident in what we're doing. It's after that that we start to see some decline. Some of that might be students are getting older, and like, "Hey, did you know that you can do this?" And they come home, you know, they come in and they do it without their parents' knowledge. But here, we're only at about 78% of our students taking that math test. 6th grade, 68%, 71%, and then in 8th grade, we go down to 48%. It is important to recognize that in 8th grade, some of that refusal rate is around the fact that a good number of our students take Algebra I. And if they're taking Algebra I in 8th grade, they are not required to take that 8th grade assessment. However, it counts against our participation. So not all of those are just kids flat-out refusing. And again, state test data isn't perfect. Lots of people can have lots of things to say about those tests. However, if I, year after year after year, see that we have 95% participation, but we are scoring high on a certain standard, that's probably a pretty good indicator that we're doing okay there. If year after year after year, I have 95% participation, and I have a certain standard where our students are struggling, that's probably an indicator that we need to make a change to better educate our students. So that's part of the reason why that's important, that we have those. Now, we're going to take a look at the ELA data. Similarly, our 3rd grade, we're up at 95%. Going on to 4th grade, we're at 90, so very similar to the math there. And again, while not at that 95 where we're supposed to be for the state and federal mandates, it does give us a pretty good idea of how our students are doing against different standards, and in comparison to some of our colleague, or some of the students in other districts. When we look at 5th grade, we went from 45 to 79, a substantial jump in the number of students that we have taking the test. But here, we are getting to a point where we have more than 20% of the students who are not taking a test, which makes it more difficult for us to make decisions using that data. And then in 7th and 8th grade, or in 6th and 7th grade, 71 and 74, and in 8th grade, 57. In the next couple of minutes, Dr. Kufel is going to talk to you about proficiency rates at Lancaster High School. And then Mrs. Henke is going to jump into proficiency in the 3-8 assessments. When Dr. Kufel talks to you about those Regents exams, keep in mind that everyone who takes the course has to take the exam. That is a full set of data. And that allows us to have very, a high level of confidence in the decisions we make around those tests. When Mrs. Henke talks about the 3-8, you're going to see where some of that comes into play, where it makes it more difficult for us to make decisions, because not everyone is taking those tests. So again, we're going to keep encouraging our families and our students to take these tests. They are, they are valid data points that we need to make decisions around instruction, resources, curricular materials. And so, we're really excited about the fact that those numbers are starting to grow.
Thank you, Dr. Marchioli. So, as Karen said here, some district proficiency. So proficiency, we're looking at how they performed and the pass rates. And for the context of this, and to keep it simple, the pass rate is about 65% for these exams, for each of the exams we're going to review. I'm not going to go through each one of these slides, because I don't know that that's necessary at this point in the presentation, but we'll go through them a little bit more closely. But you recall that I mentioned early on, having the statewide data to make comparisons. So if you take a look, and if you recall, the Erie One BOSEs represents 19 local, regionally located school districts, you'll see how the district in that middle column performed in comparison to Erie One BOSEs. Okay? And you'll see the ranges there go from anywhere up to, I think, about 25% of points different, through maybe 12, 13 points at the low end. Okay? So we have some, quite honestly, especially in comparison, and not in isolation, some pretty fantastic numbers. I think what's important on this slide to note is that these are our high school students. So this is the end product of our kiddos that start with us, many of them in pre-K, and work all the way through the system. And our kids do a fantastic job, but it's also, it doesn't just happen at the high school. It doesn't just happen at One Forton Drive. We build programs, and we build, and as Karen's talking about, curriculum and instructional decisions, instructional decisions. Those are done in alignment within a grade level, within a course, and between. So we pride ourselves on that. I think it's also important to note that, in addition to the proficiency rates, we do have, and we're not sharing this right now, some pretty high mastery rates, which are students who are above 85%. And as Karen said, I think it bears the chance to highlight it, all of our students in those, in these courses, excuse me, are taking these tests. We're at almost 100% there in that first one. That's built largely on reading and students' ability to read, pull information, evidence from the excerpts, and then put it in place in writing. And that, those literacy skills, both in, in social studies and in ELA, are things that transfer all the way from 3-8 up. So we're going to get back to some of the other data, but we'll bookend it with this slide. I think I'm turning it over to Ms. Henke.
Good evening. This is a lot of numbers after a very late-night Bills game, so you guys are doing wonderful. I'm going to examine some of the overall proficiency for ELA in grades 3-8 for both 2022 and 2023, and talk a little bit about how participation and proficiency scores can inform our teachers, our professional development, and our instruction. So overall, you will see our proficiency rates are higher in almost every case than the other 18 districts in Erie One BOSEs. In 3rd grade, we did see a slight dip in overall proficiency as a district, but the number of children who scored a 4, these assessments are on a 1-4 scale, the students who scored a 4 or exceeded state expectations, went from a 1.6% to 12.9% over the course of one year. That in itself is exciting news, but if you think back to when Dr. Marchioli was talking about participation, 95% of our students in grade 3 took that exam. And so that really means we know how all of our students were doing. And we can reliably look at that group of students and schools to make sound curricular decisions about what we need to do as a district. And data like this made our decision to move more towards phonics instruction in the early years very easy for us. In 4th grade, we also have relatively good participation. It was 90%, if you remember back. And of course, we'd like that to be at 100%, but I think that we can do a deep dive here and take a look at how our students are doing and better understand where we need to go. We see a strong increase at 4th grade of almost 15 percentage points as opposed to 2022. And we scored significantly higher than the area and the state. For me personally, at William Street, I was excited about these 4th grade results. We implemented a new program, and I was just pumped to see how well our students did. When we look at another grade, grade 6, for example, it looks like there's a drop. 51% is actually where we were at pre-pandemic, and we are still outperforming the district. And then when you look at 7th and 8th grade, those numbers become much more difficult to examine. We think back on participation rates, and our students were not performing at that 90, 95% we're seeing at the upper grade levels, but still feeling relatively confident about the fact that we are outperforming the region in most cases. I think it's important to note here that these results do not necessarily have to do with just pure reading ability, whether or not our students can read. These are tough exams that our students are being asked to do higher-level thinking skills on a computer with multiple genres of texts that they've never seen before, all on one day at one time. We're going to take a look also at the math proficiency scores here. And very similarly, our scores increased, proficiency rates increased from 2022 to 2023. Again, our students are performing above Erie One BOSEs and the state, but the participation rates do make that upper-level data difficult to dig into. At grade 6 math, you will notice that we did dip in our proficiency rate, but when we dug deeper as a team, we noticed that our scores, as well as this, in the state, there was a 9-10% decrease. So it was an issue locally, but also regionally, and as a state as a whole. And our math team continues to do great work partnering with BOSEs and in vertical alignment meetings as a district. And we are looking at ways we can increase proficiency district-wide. And now, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Tresman.
Thanks, Mrs. Henke. I'm going to begin by talking a little bit about the specific CDEP goal with Algebra at Lancaster Middle School. The goal is to increase the number of students of a given cohort earning proficiency, which again, we talked was at 65% or greater in the course and the Regents exam for our 8th grade students to 85% by the 27, 2027 school year. We'll take a closer look at the data of enrollment and proficiency data from the 2017 to the 2014 school year, with the COVID data from 2020 to 2021 being removed. As we continue to increase the number of students participating in Algebra in the 8th grade, we feel it is important to continue providing additional supports for all students. This began with the reconfiguration of 6th grade at William Street during the 21-22 school year, and providing every student with a map, math lab, every other day during their 7th grade year. Math labs were introduced for Math 7 students during the 22-23 school year, and now we are building the capacity with Algebra Labs as an additional support throughout the day for the 23-24 school year. Students have either been scheduled, or they can receive additional support throughout the school day. This school year, we currently have the highest percentage of students participating in Algebra at 40.3%. In an effort to provide more access to more students that need additional support, we are piloting two targeted class sections of students that are completing the accelerated math curriculum, but at a different pace. Feedback from teachers involved in the pilot has been positive, and this is providing more of an opportunity for students to participate in Algebra in 8th grade. The proficiency rate, excuse me, of 65% has remained consistent with 100% of students successfully passing the examination, which is significantly higher than the Erie One BOSEs, proficiency rate of 68%, New York State at 66%, which will be looked at a little bit more closely by Mrs. Ludit.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. All right, so I'm going to just share a little bit about the math proficiency rates specifically for the district. So when you take a look at these rates, especially for Algebra, Algebra I, keep in mind that that data is reflective of both the middle school students that are enrolled in Algebra, as well as the high school students, as we just heard Mr. Tresman discuss the participation of 8th grade students in Algebra I. So overall, in the world of Regents mathematics, as you can see in the data behind me, our district compared to Erie One BOSEs component districts significantly outperforms with regard to proficiency year after year, pre and post-COVID. As our students successfully complete Algebra I, they continue on in their math journeys at the high school to take geometry and Algebra II. For some of our students who might need that additional support in mathematics, these courses can be taken with an additional lab period that's offered every other day. In reflecting on our math CDEP goal, that's to increase the number of students in a graduating cohort to earn college credit in mathematics. So this could be through one of our dual enrollment offerings, or through an AP course. We're looking to increase that to 80%. Through this data, and the hope of students' continued participation and successful completion of all of their math classes, the Regents level, this will naturally encourage students to continue their studies in math at the high school, ultimately working towards taking an AP course or a dual enrollment math course during their junior, or even their senior year, or both. All right, I'm going to pass it back to Mr. Tresman to talk a little bit about living environment and middle school science.
Thank you. And the second of the goals that pertains specifically for Lancaster Middle School is to increase the number of students earning proficiency in living environment to 100% in the 8th grade by 2027. The data collection for this table began in 2017, when we increased the number of living environment sections from 8 to 12 at the beginning of the 16-17 school year. These sections remain the same through the 22-23 school year, when we added two more sections for this current school year of the 23-24, with a goal of adding two additional sections for 24-25, increasing the percentage of students enrolled from the cohort. With the creation of new sections, we wanted to ensure the necessary supports have been implemented. In order to do this, we have began providing additional support during the class period for these two new sections, and expanding to four in the upcoming school year. As a part of our Science CDEP Committee, we are collaborating as a team to create supports to provide opportunities for our students to achieve success. Our proficiency rate has remained above 95% over the past five administrations, which is significantly higher than the Erie One BOSEs proficiency scores at 64%, and New York State at 66%, which will be viewable over the next few slides and presented by Mrs. Ludit.
Thanks again. I'm back. You guys are doing great. We're just, we're a little more than halfway through the data presentation. So let's talk a little bit about what physical science is and how it's related to the high school. So Mr. Tresman discussed the Science CDEP goals and how it's related to the middle school. Our other Science CDEP goal is to increase the number of students in a given cohort earning proficiency in at least one physical science to 100%. What that is, physical science, is earth science, chemistry, and/or physics. So we're looking for students when they're in our high school to take additional science courses, and we're looking for 100%. So the data on this slide represents where we currently stand with regards to that goal. The first goal is representative of this year's current seniors. So this is showing that approximately 82% of our seniors have completed successfully a physical science course and exam. The second row represents our current juniors, and so that shows you we've got about 86% of our students that are successfully completing a physical science before graduation. And then when you take a look at the third row, that shows our current sophomores. And it's broken up into really the third and fourth row for a particular reason. So the third row shows our fresh, our sophomores, when they were freshmen, their successful completion of earth science. The fourth row shows that another 111 students from that sophomore cohort, they're currently enrolled in a physical science class. So we don't yet have their, their, their passing data, but our projections are showing that our sophomore cohort will successfully complete about 81, 82%. So we're making strides towards that goal of 100%. So similar to when we took a look at the math Regents data, this is our science Regents data. And additionally, the living environment data is reflective of the district, so that encompasses the success at the middle school and the high school as well. And again, as you can see, our district just outperforms with regards to proficiency year after year. We're almost there. So as a reminder, this is where our students are when they leave high school, when they graduate from Lancaster High School. It's a representation of all of the hard work that is done within our district pre-K to 12. I'm going to pass things off to Mr. Krasman now, where he's going to wrap things up and talk a little bit about advanced placement and dual enrollment.
Thank you, Mrs. Ludit. For those of you still awake, this is the end. So these last couple of slides, we're there to talk about life after Lancaster. So a lot of the things that you've heard everybody speaking about here, what are the things that are going on to get students ready for that next phase? Now, we're going to talk a little bit about that next phase, which is advanced placement and dual enrollment. Dual enrollment is the opportunity for students to earn college credit through an articulation agreement with a local college or university, meaning that students are taking courses at Lancaster High School with our teachers, with our faculty members, and simultaneously achieving high school credit towards graduation, but then also having the opportunity to obtain college credit through that local college or university that we have a partnership with. So if you take a look at the numbers there behind me, I want to reiterate to you what our CDEP goal is around dual enrollment and advanced placement. And that's to have 80, 85% of our students in a given cohort successfully complete at least three dual enrollment college courses and two advanced placement courses during their four years at Lancaster High School. So if you think of it from the perspective of a college semester, that's one semester's worth of coursework. That 85% comes from our senior profile data. And what our senior profile data has told us over the course of the past couple of years, that on average, about 85% of our students, upon graduation from LHS, are moving on to two- or four-year post-secondary education institutions. So looking at the last two years of graduates, what we can see is that almost an entire cohort of graduates, or an entire cohort of participates, in at least one dual enrollment opportunity before graduating from high school. So that's that 400 that you see enrolled in one. And cohorts right now are just a little bit over 400. So when we say participation, we are talking about the total number of students enrolled in a course that have the option or the opportunity to obtain college credit. Not every single student up here is obtaining it, but every single student has the opportunity. They are sitting in the class with that opportunity to obtain that college credit. They are getting that exposure to what it's, what it is like to be in a college-type of a situation. So the number of our current seniors, so that's that bottom tab at the bottom, the 2024, you'll see currently 171 students have already successfully completed a dual enrollment opportunity in their time here at Lancaster. They're probably taking more, in fact, they are taking more now as seniors, so that number will continue to rise closer to what you see, where you see that 400 or 407 enrolled in at least one. So once we do this presentation again for you, next year, you'll see more complete data of where our current seniors, the class of 2024, finishes. So the next thing here that you're going to see is you're going to see a year-to-year cross-section of data, where students across grade levels in a given year who are participating in our advanced, or participating in the College Board's Advanced Placement Program while here at Lancaster. So what you'll see is we hover anywhere from about 340 to 390 students over the course of the past few years. the course of the past few years that annually are participating in the Advanced Placement Program, with those students making up of anywhere to six to seven hundred exams. That's a lot, that almost seven hundred, in some years, seven hundred advanced placement exams are being administered to our high school students every May. So one of the notes that we're extremely proud of, if you take a look at the grade section at the bottom, is that if you look at our performance data of our students who are participating in advanced placement courses, what you will see is that there is this steady increase in the amount of students who are scoring three or higher. So for those of you who may not know, AP exams are scored on a scale of one to five. In order for a student to have an opportunity to obtain college credit through an advanced placement examination, they need to score three or better, depending upon the institution in which they are applying for. Some schools, it's a three, some schools may be a four, and then schools will take that credit varying by the different institutions. But what we're seeing here is over the course of the past few years, from seventy to almost seventy-five percent, we are seeing students scoring three or higher with having a greater opportunity of obtaining that college credit. These last couple of slides, I just want to highlight, we have twenty different advanced placement courses at Lancaster High School. So what we want to do is we wanted to drill into some of the course data and highlight just some of the remarkable work that is happening at the high school by our students and their families, the teachers, and what we're seeing is that in many of our courses, our students and teachers are exceeding the mean scores, not only from New York State, but from around the world. The College Board is an internationally-recognized institution, and AP exams are not just administered here in New York State, but they are administered worldwide. And if you were to take a look at the data that's here, AP Biology, last year, in the twenty-two twenty-three administration of Advanced Placement Biology, the average score on a one to five for our students who took the AP Bio exam last year was a four-point three. The New York State mean score was two-point-nine. That's a pretty substantial difference. The international mean was three-point-oh. If you take a look at those first four sections or those first four courses that are listed, those are all offerings from our Science Department: Biology, Environmental Science, Chemistry, and Physics C, which is a calculus-based physics. You'll notice, if you were to take a composite look of those mean scores from the district, Lancaster scores on average three-point-nine-seven. The New York State average is three-point-oh-five, and the global mean is three-point-oh-five, so almost a full point higher. Our students, through the guidance of their teachers, are scoring almost one full point higher in a mean on those science assessments in comparison to New York State and internationally. If you take a look at Computer Science, it's a half a point higher than what the state and global means are. You'll see in ELA, it's also higher. If you take a look at Music Theory, it's a little bit higher, and then if you look at from our Social Studies Department, American Government, US History, World History, you'll see, again, it's almost a solid point five across the board. This is awesome work that, again, that is being done by our kids, it's being done by our families, it's being done by our teachers, administrators, the community as a whole, and we want to congratulate them for all of these great accomplishments, and we look forward to all the other great things that are yet to come and think of what our kids are doing beyond Lancaster. That's it. Anybody have any questions? If so, Dr. Kufa will come back to the microphone. Yes, Joe? So essentially, how dual enrollment works is students, we have a partnership, we'll say, with Buffalo State University or SUNY Erie, and what happens is students can receive credit based on their performance in that course over a forty-week period of time. So projects, tests, assessments, students can obtain credit over an entire window of what they do in a course, similarly to what you would do in a college course over the course of, say, a fifteen-week or a twenty-week semester. With advanced placement, you're still taking that course over the course of the entire year. The difference is whether or not you get college credit or have the opportunity to receive college credit is solely determined by your performance on the advanced placement exam in May. So if you score ninety-five, say, in AP all year, and you get a four on the exam, depending on where you go to school, you may get certain credit, you may not get credit, it's dependent upon what you get on that exam in May. Where the college or the dual enrollment piece, you're also only getting credit from that particular institution. So for working with SUNY Erie, for working with Buffalo State, those credits would be transferable within the SUNY system, depending on where you're going. So if you're getting credits through SUNY, which is, or through SUNY Erie, it's a SUNY school, some of those credits could be transferable to University of Buffalo, to Buffalo State, Genasui, Oswego, wherever you may be going. But to kind of answer the question, the difference, dual enrollment, there's a body of work over the course of, you know, forty weeks or twenty weeks if it's a half-year course. AP, it's a full-year course where credit is determined by how you perform on the exam in May. You're welcome. Great question. Anybody else? I saved it there, Dr. Kufa. I got you. All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm a big data nerd myself, so I love that we're using data like that to inform decisions moving forward, and great job to the team. Thanks again. All right. Five dot O, correspondence. We do not have any correspondence this week. Six dot O, six dot one, can I get a motion to approve the regular session minutes from December eleventh, twenty-two thirty-three?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm opposed.
All opposed. Can I get a motion on six dot two, the special session minutes from December nineteenth, twenty-two thirty-three?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm opposed.
All opposed. All right. Seven dot O, items from staff organization. Do we have anybody from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association today?
Thank you.
Anybody from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening and Happy New Year. Just a couple of things. I just want to share with the board that the LCTA, last month, they said that we had members that were planning to go to St. Luke's Mission to help around the holidays. We had forty-nine members who volunteered to make lunches and distribute food. Our members also donated eight hundred and ten dollars to St. Luke's to provide two meals for up to a thousand people. We also donated money to the Leadership Students to help fund the Cookie Extravaganza for the Day of Giving, and the LCTA donated three hundred dollars to the Block L, to Block L, excuse me, to purchase supplies to make birthday bags for children whose families use the Trinity Food Pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substituted Teachers? All right, moving on to eight dot O, board reports. Anybody have anything to report this week? Nine dot O, Superintendent's Administrative Report. Dr. Vallee?
Yeah, Mrs. Kufa, I have two things. Number one, two thousand twenty-four is upon us, and so is budget season. So departments and building budget requests were due to the Business Office last week of December. Initial figures, we compiled, and we're ready to present the initial buildings, grounds, transportation, employee benefits, and debt service draft budgets to the Board at their first Board Work Session on January twenty-second. At this time, as I do every year, the Board of Education, I would like to encourage and offer an invitation to participate in the process. So anyone in the audience today or watching on local live, come out and join us. Each and every year, we have a number of budget work sessions before the Board presents its final budget to the community for approval in May. So again, people can come out in person to watch the Board of Education do its work, or it can be seen via local live. So we encourage you to participate. Secondly, you know, time flies. So I was watching that presentation, and one moment, you're thirty-five years old and you're Assistant Superintendent doing the presentation. The next thing you know, you're fifty-five years old and your superintendent watches the presentation. And so I think a couple of comments that I just sort of feel compelled to state, and that is that the things that you saw today are over a long period of time, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And it starts out with focusing on what's most important for kids. And I've said this publicly dozens and dozens of times, and I'll say it again, that it is better to have eighty percent passing rates than a hundred percent passing rates, if you look at the data correctly. And what I mean by that is, a math department might get disappointed if all of a sudden their passing rates are eighty percent. But if they look and they see that a hundred and sixty, excuse me, yeah, a hundred and sixty kids passed at eighty percent, all right, let's say, two hundred kids took it, you had eighty percent, and a hundred and sixty kids passed, that's a lot better than having a hundred kids at a hundred percent, because that's only a hundred kids. Sixty more kids passed. So when you put that in context of the middle school, for example, middle school living environment, two decades ago, had about fifty kids who took Regents, high school, living environment. And now, what were the numbers? Two hundred and eighty? Two hundred and eighty students take and pass high school Regents credit living environment. Two decades ago, zero middle school kids took Algebra Two, excuse me, Algebra One, zero. Now, two decades later, that translates, what was that number? Pardon me? Hundred and seventy kids are taking, middle school students are taking Regents, high school math in middle school. What does that do? That opens up, because now they pass two high school classes in middle school. Then they go and they take the next classes in ninth grade, which would be a potential, another living in, excuse me, life science or a physical science. And in math, it goes to geometry. So consequently, as they get to their junior and senior year, their courses open up, and now they're able to take AP courses. So I had a conversation over the weekend, just by happenstance, and I was talking to a gentleman who said, my son is going to school, and he is entering in as a freshman as a first-year sophomore, a first semester sophomore, because of all the courses he took: dual enrollment, AP, and all those kind of things. So not only was he thrilled that it saved him a whole year of tuition, but he was also thrilled because his son had already taken all those courses and had a whole year under his belt of AP and dual enrollment courses. That's taken, you know, a long time to get there, but I think and hope that this Board and this community sees that progression and whatever else. And I'd like to say that that takes a lot of hard work and effort by teachers inside classrooms. That's the most important thing. We say it all the time. Teachers inside classrooms had to take on those challenges, and as they're increasing those numbers from one hundred to two hundred and forty, fifty to two hundred and eighty, that's more challenging students, more difficult instruction that has to happen, more curricular changes, more effort, whatever else. So I think it's a testament to not only the administrators that, you know, put the programs in place and analyze the data and everything else, but also the teachers and the support staff and everyone else here in the school district that has resulted in that success. In the end, this school district has ninety-nine point five percent graduation rate, which is number one in Western New York for, I think, seven years consecutively. And we flirt with zero percent dropouts every single year. So many, 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 many people should be congratulated over all that time period and everything else, but we have a lot of good things going. And if you know me in any way, shape, or form, we're not going to stop. We're going to keep on pushing, because we're really thinking about kids. Those aren't just numbers, but they're actual kids, and we keep on pushing because that's good for kids in the end. So I just couldn't stop and say that, so that was sort of just off the cuff. Hope my numbers were correct. Hope I did my math off the, you know, off the cuff, off the top of my head correctly. But a lot of great things and a lot of great people are responsible for that. And also, I think it behooves me to say that none of those things happened without a support of Board of Education that listens to those presentations, is focused on kids. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to the community who supports our budgets and supports our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vallee. All right, moving on to ten dot O, old business. Does anybody have any old business? Okay. Eleven dot O, new business. Eleven dot one, eleven dot one dot one, personnel changes. Can I get a motion on those? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
I'm opposed.
All opposed? Motion passes. Eleven dot two, eleven dot two dot one, Committee on Special Education. Can I get a motion on the action for Committee on Special Education? Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
I'm opposed.
All opposed? Motion carries. Eleven dot two dot two, can I get a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Twelve dot O, twelve dot one, can I get a motion on the financial items? All in favor? Oh, any discussion? Sorry. Twelve dot two, can I get a motion to adopt policy seventy-five twenty-one, students with life-threatening health conditions? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Twelve dot three, this is information only. This is policy second reading for thirty-two seventy-one, solicitation of charitable donations. We will be looking to approve that at our next meeting. Twelve dot four, food service operating reports. Can I get a motion on the November twenty-two thirty-three reports? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to accept the auction results? Twelve dot five. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Twelve dot six, can I get a motion on the Student Vending Services Agreement? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Twelve dot seven, can I get a motion on the contract with Flylight Design? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on Club Creations? Twelve dot eight. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one zero, amended food service budget? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot eleven, bid acceptance with phase five construction? All, any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot twelve, the AIA contract with Mark Serone Incorporated? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot thirteen, the AIA contract with Aljair Construction Corporation? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one five, the AIA contract with D.V. Brown and Associates? Oh, I did, sorry. Twelve dot fourteen, AIA contract with Huber Construction Incorporated. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one five, the AIA contract with D.V. Brown and Associates? Comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one six, the AIA contract with M.I.P. Plumbing and Mechanical Incorporated? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one seven, the AIA contract with Goodwin Electrical Corporation? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one eight, the AIA contract with Ochino Corporation? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot one nine, to appoint Workplace Violence Coordinator? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot two zero, surplus equipment? Comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on twelve dot twenty-one, the bid extension for student agenda planners? Can I get a motion on 12.21, the bid extension for student agenda planners? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Sorry.
My interruption. When we go back to 12.9, the change orders need to be accepted.
12.9? Oh my gosh, where am I going? Okay, sorry. 12.9, can I get a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? Sorry about that, guys. All right, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Jamie. All right, 13.0 is public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak this evening, so we will go into 14.0, executive session to review a student discipline matter. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? All right, that effectively ends this portion of the meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. And our next meeting is January 22nd, 2024. We will have a budget work session at 6:30 PM here at the Williams Street School in the multipurpose room. And after that, our next scheduled board meeting is February 5th, 2024, at 7 o'clock, also here at Williams Street School. Thanks very much, everybody. Happy New Year.